Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome here to the Town Hall of Business, February 22nd, 2024. And I would ask for approval of the minutes.
I think you will have to give your minutes of approval.
Second, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Right, our next item of business is Fayetteville Lickonary Hospital, 8122, U.S.A. For the possible decision on amended site plan. So for those members of the board who may not know you, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, yeah. My name is Zach Kaplinger, Kaplinger Premium Associates. With me is Mike Benel, leasing owner of Fayetteville Bat, and Rachel Petrikowski of Ashen Draw Architects.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Well, I'll just give a brief update. Since we were last here, we prepared a response letter that addressed the questions from the last meeting board meeting. We also provided a phasing plan drawing L 103, which gave very detailed phasing for the project, breaking it down into three phases. We also fixed the layers, the drawing layers, I'm drawing L 201, so they represented what those, the grading information that should be, should have been represented on that plan. We provided the county approval for letter for the septic plans. We've also provided the county the septic plans. We also provided an authorized letter from the adjoining property owner allowing use of the adjoining property for phasing. And we updated some miscellaneous details on the plans. So that's the overview of what we've updated.
Yeah, thank you very much. We still have to go through the secret process, which should be a formality, but since we haven't got done it, we do it right now.
We can do that.
Because there were substantial changes to the site plan. My name is Steve.
From original approval?
The original, right.
Can I ask you a quick question before you? James Bender, reportedly is the owner of the neighboring property. Does he own that individually, or is there other owners of that property? No, just James, just him.
Thank you.
Okay, the first question. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Or small, probably no, or small impact, because it's more intense, right? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or existing infrastructure for mass transit by being from walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy in a phase to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
All of those questions being answered, no or small impact, the chair can entertain a motion for a negative secret declaration.
Chair would like to hear a motion for a negative secret declaration. Aaron, second. Sit down, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Congratulations. And I think this one, I'd just like to wish you the best of luck.
Well, it's a secret. So it's a secret. So.
He's reading the future.
I know. So Doug, you want me to just review any of the highlights of the responses?
No, I think we looked at everything and generally speaking, the phasing plan was a real good one before and addressed the parking, phasing plan, landscaping, and the letter from your neighbor, your partner, so not a practice technical standpoint.
Anyone have any questions from the board?
No, thank you for putting the time in to answer all of our questions. We really appreciate it, especially the phasing plan.
You're also carrying out a wonderful tradition because I can remember being on our Bassett Town, our Dr. Spaniel, Phil Marshall. That was a few years ago.
Yeah.
And he started a wonderful thing in Fayetteville and glad to see you continue.
He'll be there with a ribbon cutting and a platform too.
Okay. Now I can wish you good luck.
So I think what we'll need is a motion to approve this amended site plan as presented. And it's a, it is an amendment to the prior approval. And excepted specifically modified herein, the other approval and any conditions are conditions of this approval as well.
There's only one person in this room that can put that into a written motion. She's sitting on my right. Got all that mentioned?
Yep.
Can I hear a motion to that everything?
Absolutely.
David, thank you. Second? Aaron, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Great.
No.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want the original copy of the letter coming on? Doug?
I don't think we're even down.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you for that. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the town hall is A and E S N Y Center. This is originally an amended site plan, but we're going to treat it as an initial site plan. And we'd like to have you introduce yourselves and explain why we have.
Okay, thank you. My name is George Duran, TDK Engineering. I'm here on behalf of A and E. Also with me here tonight is Shane O'Connor from TDK in Len, Montreal, and Regina, Montreal, the owners. So we were brought in last year to assist the Montreals with the development of the project. It just started with the GeoTech program. It was our understanding that it was a site plan approval done before, as you indicated, secret determination and all that. And then there was a lot of back and forth on some of the comments on the parking and the building layout. So we've gone through the meeting minutes. You just kind of pulled everything together. To your point, we're treating it as a, as a new submission. We had already submitted into the town before we knew that. Please inform us of that afterwards. So we didn't do the architect drawings and the survey, the copies of the survey, but we'll do that and have everything pulled together for you. So what we've done, Shane, can I just, just as a brief overview of where we're going with the project now. Len has decided to shrink the, that overall floor plan. And we're not using the lower level because of the bedrock information. So what we've done is we've gone back, I'm gonna use this long stick. But our test set program shows that bedrock's down a foot and a half to three and a half feet across the site. The prior design called for a relatively steep driveway up in and then a flat cut through the entire site, which would have created a huge earthwork and bedrock impact. So what we've done is we've taken our plan and modified the entrance to be a gradual slope up in, less than handicap, seven percent. And then in the site, we're working with more or less existing grades that are there. Trying to minimize using, getting into too much bedrock, okay? So the lower level is no longer going to be occupied space. As a result of the parking comments, the reduction in required parking, we now meet those requirements to eighty-nine spaces. When we do the floor plan and give you the floor plan and all of that, we can back up the numbers. Other things that came into consideration is the site grading itself. By working with the existing grades, the prior work had a lot of ADA compliant issues, steps and stairs and railings entering the building at different points. So we went back and modified that. So now it's your conventional entrances into the building with just the regular curb cuts for ADA handicap ramps. We modified the grading and the drainage. We submitted a draft SWIP to you, Doug. We've taken your prior comments, we've got most of them pulled together now as far as the stormwater management plan goes. In essence, what we've done is we've got a stormwater management area here and here and down here. And we're working with the bedrock information to minimize the amount of rock cut that we're gonna have to get into. Just to make the site look right and function right. Now, what it does is the building here will have a greater exposed face without doing some preventative maintenance for the, for drainage. There was comments about how the, the steep grades along with the road were going to be managed. So we're proposing retaining walls in here. And also because of that, the sidewalk easement, we've got to provide those features to protect the access on the sidewalk. So it'd be a step retaining wall. Some of the other features that we've thrown out, the low level occupancy, ADA compliance, retaining walls. Basically what we've done is we've flattened the site out, minimized the earthwork, we've balanced the cotton fills to keep out of the bedrock for the utilities. So right now, we've got our stormwater management plan coming together. We've got, we modified, proposed utility entrances into the building with the water and the sewer connections. We've got a little bit of work to do with WEP and Aqua as far as water services and probably the town DPW as well. So overall, what we've done is we've taken the same site plan and the same general building footprint. And we've kind of reworked some of the earthwork and the grading, the drainage, the stormwater management to address the town's comments. There's another aspect that I wanted to allude to. Oh, in the, in the prior minutes, we looked at, you received the town board authorized rezoning. And with that went with provided variances, like building setbacks. So we just, we captured that. So basically, the site plan is pretty much a conventional layout now with not a lot of earthwork, other than at the entrance. There's some retaining wall features. There'll be the landscaping features and we'll get into all those details with the next submission. So I think, Shane, did I miss anything here? Yeah, that's about it. I guess with the new submission, the question is, is Doug, you did say you plan approval, we're starting over, does it have to go back to SOC BO again?
Yeah, we're gonna send it back.
Everything, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty substantial changes. That, that's not to say it's bad. It's probably overall better. We had a lot of questions about, well, a lot of things, but.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know if anyone has any initial comments.
I have two questions. And I may have missed it when I went through the plan. The square footage, the floor plan square footage of this proposed, is it the same, greater than, less than what was originally?
It's, it's the same. It's about twenty-five thousand.
Optimize the lower level.
Right, well, the overall footprint stayed the same.
Okay.
There's no lower level.
And so twenty-four thousand, just under twenty-five thousand square feet.
Okay.
Twenty-four is different.
And there was that, that little piece that's near the, the outdoor, whatever it's called, the, the lower piece. No, not here, right, right there, right there. That was to, no, no, of the building.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. That was to be used, if I'm remembering the story, as a different use for what the applicant was gonna use it for. Like they were renting out or do something different there. Just wanted to exact this. Cause I didn't see in here a layout, a floor plan layout.
Right, right. We did, we did not, we didn't provide it this time. We didn't provide supplemental information, which we didn't realize this could be treated as a, as a new submission. So we'll, we'll give those next time.
Okay.
For what?
Okay, all right.
I just addressed that. My name is Mike Papa, I'm the owner of A and E S N Y Center. Hey, speaking of the area that's in tan, at, at the area between the two.
The patio or something.
Right.
Yeah. I'm talking about the loyage, right there.
Your office. Yep.
So my understanding was it was gonna be something different than your use, you were gonna rent it or, I can't remember.
Yep, so since our last meeting, what we're going to be adding upstairs, that we were going to put downstairs is medical weight loss upstairs. And now physical therapy, which moves some office space towards that back area. So we always had office space in the back, right up where the hill would be located.
Yep.
We're adding more office space there. And just bringing what we had downstairs upstairs.
So be all your company's expenses?
I'll be occupying the space. And so that, that footprint, unless I'm mistaken, should be exact to what our first submission was. And what we're not, what we don't get here obviously is fifteen thousand square feet below. But this is the same footprint.
Okay, cause I, I remember, I think I remember that you were gonna rent some of that out, whether it was a fifty percent or something, I can't remember what you said.
So physical therapy was gonna be rented out.
Okay.
But that was gonna occupy fifteen thousand square feet on the bottom, so I'm gonna lock.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, you remember, you remember pretty good, actually.
I wouldn't bet on that.
Obviously you're gonna resubmit. There were some things, I'm happy you mentioned those two things are retaining walls because they're not labeled. It was mystifying trying to figure out what they were doing on either side of your storm chamber system. That's very helpful.
Okay.
Somebody should walk through and just look at your symbology on GD one. I think the catch basin and the drainage manhole things are reversed. I can find drainage manholes two and two, four, can't find one. One seems to be unlabeled. There's some confusion in the labeling, trying to follow the material. That's particularly on GD or sheet GD one. I assume the turf reinforcement map, that's for the overflows of the two water retention systems? Cause that's not really identified. You sort of gotta think, why is this in the thing in the detail?
That, that is the intent.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just, it's where the documentation.
It will, it will be tight next time. We'll have all that.
It means a lot to try and hook things together.
It, it won't be in the next submission. We'll have everything tied together.
If I could just add to that as well, though, the, the turf reinforcement map in both locations for the, let's see, I guess the northwestern stormwater management area and the, yeah, the upper lower, both of them are under emergency situations.
That's all fine. It's just you had a somewhat unusual cross-section of, of that. And so, well, why is this on the map? And it's, it all seems that it's in those overflows for the two drainage basins. That's a problem. Minor thing at this point, the concrete curb detail or the grass or the vegetated areas that are in the parking lot, are they curved? Is that why?
They will be, they will be curved, yes.
Okay. Again, that's wasn't evident trying to look through.
It's, it's not. I had to actually do that today. Well, the game plan wasn't, obviously gotta redo that with that, so this will all be spelled out.
Fine.
And tied, and tied to the architect plans too.
This is really minor. I mean, a cross-section for the stormcast system. You've got the typical thing out of free, like they're side by side, where yours isn't that, yours is a chain thing. It's really kind of, not this meeting is kind of not helpful to talk about this project, but that particular example of the stormcast installation.
Okay.
I'm not sure there is one that, when they're chained.
We'll clean it up.
It's, it's, it's something that's more speaks directly to what has been used on this project rather than this generalized thing of how the systems are used across a variety of platforms.
Understood. We'll clean that up.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran, I would ask you, when you do resubmit, that all your resubmissions be completely in one package. So that we can look at just one thing and see, not have to refer back to what was.
Okay, yeah.
That's very helpful for the planning board.
One note on that, my experience here, it'd be helpful if you had perspectives of the new, of the building.
Yes, sir.
Color. I'm sure some others will think of other things, but a complete package is very helpful. Or we end up in this reiteration process, then we end up in a process with, what we got this time, partial flow from the last one, partial? Are they consistent? Are they gated? So we know, we're looking at recent material. Any effort that is a comprehensive package, all dated, helps us be expeditious in our review.
We'll make sure of it. Okay, we'll take the prior comments, we've done the most recent ones, and the comments that were in the meeting minutes, we'll tie everything together in these as well. We'll dial right in.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, anybody else want to answer? Um, I'm guessing, my name's Aaron, when we talked about, we've not met here before. So when we talk about comments you received from Doug, were these ones from this review or the previous project?
Both.
Okay, so you've seen this, you've seen Doug's stuff, okay.
Proceed to my side.
Okay, perfect. So just one quick question. What are the uses in the building going to be? I heard PT, medical weight loss.
Yep. So A and E's been around for fifty-seven years. We're a med spa that provides a lot of laser services, laser tattoo, laser hair removal, acne scars, sunspots, et cetera.
Okay.
On it represents about fifty percent of our treatment modality. We provide injectables such as Botox and Juvenur. We do CoolScoping, we do hydropatials. We're early in about forty-two hundred square feet. It will literally be twice the size. Very common services.
Okay. I was just kind of curious, cause I didn't know if that would come up. I'll look back from the beginning sheets and on SP one. One of the things that I had a hard time with, cause I was trying to, to understand this, was the color. I appreciate color very much and building elevations and landscaping plans for that kind of thing. But on the grading plan, it's really hard to read when you're used to black and white. Especially because the existing and the proposed contours are both pretty, albeit slightly different shapes. And the proposed contours are dashed, as well as the existing contours with the exception of the five-foot ones. So it's very much kind of hard to understand as you're looking at it.
You want black and white?
The line weight, that would be my preference, but you can submit it however you want. The line weights are so similar, the line types are the, the, you know, very similar. The colors are very similar, just some differentiation there and how maybe the proposed contours be solid, although it seems to be more of a traditional way of doing it. I noticed, or I heard that, so I wasn't around when the original project was going through the review, just at the very tail end of it. And I heard that the fifty-foot setbacks were weighed or adjusted by the town board. What about the screening requirement?
The, the setback was a ZDA.
Okay.
Issue, yes. So that's already been, and then that carries on from the line. And I would like to screen elements you're talking about.
There's a screening about service entries to the property line.
What was it that, Aaron? I don't specifically recall.
Service areas within a neighborhood shopping district, loading, unloading merchandise, delivering food, equipment, garbage, shall they locate a minimum of a hundred feet from any adjoining property line of properties owned residential or restricted agricultural, I believe the retirement homes restricted agricultural.
I think that was addressed in the last call around.
Was it part of that?
Yes. Yeah.
It's just something that I thought might have been taken care of, but I wasn't. If you, you said you would explain to us the division of the parking count, cause I saw on the data table, there was the two different uses of medical office and then personal services, and they have different square footage. And I, it's a significant change since the last one in parking count, so I was just curious if you could show us that breakdown, but I think you already addressed that.
And I, and I think the, the breakdown that was used in this was four thousand square foot. Uh, yeah, four thousand square feet of personal services, equating to twenty spaces. Twenty thousand six hundred medical office, equating to six and nine.
So that's the remainder, okay. So did you come out right on number, or do you have extra, or?
Uh, we rounded up.
So I think, I think it was like eighty-eight point sixteen.
So you're really, you're right on?
Yeah.
Okay. At the entrances, one of the things that we talked about in this for durability and maintenance, and it also carries in a little bit more to the grading. But we've had, had granite curving at the entrance because of somewhat, because of this deep slope. But also for durability and continuity. And that's a detail that we find really important versus concrete.
So the ones that are up to right now are concrete? The ones that, so you want us to transition that up into the site?
We did. I mean, the previous one had that steep section and I think it carried through there. But just what you would, I don't know if Doug has a preference or if the highway department has a preference, but you know, it carries in like you'd normally see in a transition back.
Sure. Yeah, like go to the right way limit or something.
Something like that, yeah.
And then just dive it into the concrete.
The taper, taper section. Because it doesn't look like there's any other curve on the driveway section. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I don't think that is correct. We'll wait out.
Okay. And then I heard you say earlier that you thought the islands would probably be curved and isolated escaping. That the only other, there's curb shown up along the front of the building and down towards stormwater management area number two. And I'm curious how that's gonna work with some of the grading and the stormwater collection? Because it doesn't look like there's, you know, catch bases along through there. And it looks like the contours are generated by the grading program that you probably used, and they're kind of over the place, so they should be tightened up. And I think that having only one catch basin right near stormwater management area number two could be a little bit problematic for half that park.
It's a pretty small site, but we'll, we'll look at all that, give you the background on it. And then as far as the curbs and the flow through, there'll be curb cuts where we need them, spillways if that's a way we grade the site.
Yeah, because a chunk of that upper parking lot towards the driveway entrance is sheet flowing off the edge and right into the back of that wall. And so I don't know how you're a wall, you're shaking your head.
Yeah. So the proposed grades are, is a high point ridge from basically the center of the building.
Yep.
Back to the radius. So it's sheeting radially.
Yep.
There's a curve on the backside of the parking lot. You referring to the?
It's the left-hand side that I'm mostly looking at.
Oh, so yeah. So with this being the high point sort of here, you know, this is gonna all sheet this well.
Yeah.
For that stormwater management. This is curb. And here you can't really see the site plan and the other detail for a spillway. Is that basically, this is a high point, that's a high point, that both slope downwards to here. So any collected, you know, that, this portion of the parking area, you know, would just trellis, she's slow, concentrate here and have a space spillway down.
Right, that has a six-inch drop.
So I think what I'm making a flashlight. The, the concern that I had was that there's just one point. And I'm not, this is not working right, but from that ridge line over to the left.
Well, this is, this is here.
There's only one spot.
Yeah, that's actually, I mean, that's actually just a junction manhole. With this being an equalizer place, basically just provide access for this long run of the.
No, do you know what I'm saying, Doug?
So swinging the bill, pitches to the outside.
I understand that. I know what the ridge is. I get that.
Cause no catch base.
That whole left-hand side of the parking lot from the ridge to the northwest is going to one spot. Let's see, they're going to your little spillway. But according to the grading, I guess the curb's not shown on this part, but all that water's coming down into that one spot. And that's not necessarily maybe ideal.
Okay.
I mean, that's a lot of water. Where's the snow? Where are you gonna put all the snow?
Well, pouring wise, we gotta go around the island, it'll probably be at the rear side of the site, to the right-hand side.
Okay, cause that can cause problems with the way the water, the water's gonna sheet flow off that parking lot. If you push all the snow over there, it'll just dam it up.
Yeah, it will provide spillways and everything. We'll delineate, we'll call it out. And we'll make sure that there's a designated spot that'll be for the snow storage.
So I don't wanna, you know, get into all the, too much of the many gritty, but I think we're gonna, you know, those are the kind of details. those are the kind of details that we're looking for, and I think you, you probably understand what I'm, what I'm after here.
Absolutely.
Let's see, I did see the, um, information in the SWIP appendices and the, um, test pits and stuff like that, your equalization pipe, took me a little bit to sort that out, it's actually labeled twelve inches on the plan, and in your SWIP, you've labeled it as twenty-four, and, you know, I just, those are some, which is it? And, you know, how much blasting are you expecting to have to do? Because to have a twenty-four inch pipe below the pavement section, at the proposed elevations, and what we know from the warrants the bedrock's at, that's really.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a preliminary limb without talking to the owners, but no blasting. It's all whole rim, it's, it's, it's.
It's ripable.
Yeah, it is ripable.
Um.
A lot of that kept here, we saw is over on Twin Shores across the road, and it looks like they ripped that too.
Same stuff, um, I guess it's not a good surprise, I don't have a lot of experience with the site, other than when I read historically about it. And then, you know, I had a couple of questions about, um, it looks like you've got your basins, one and two are going to be, the bottom of the basin is going to be kind of the top of the bedrock? Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, we were basically, you know, trying to realize.
So, how are you going to grow, I mean?
So these are, um, so essentially, these are just going to be dry detention service storage to a water quality treatment unit, uh, ultimately down here, downstream of all the management. Um, so these are just strictly detention.
Okay.
And then as far as grass, another imported out, so forty-six inches from over here.
Correct.
Because that's, things don't grow so well when it's just really, it's a tough way of putting it, bedrock. When it's the primary treatment area of the ladder, you know, kind of an off.
Well, I'll, I'll make sure that it does, and that we got a sudden solution does.
Maybe there's some other options within D E C's manual that might better suit it.
We'll take a look at that.
And then, when you get down, I see that you're basically using a small invert outsized of these basins to kind of choke back and hold back the water, and that's your control for the, um, one-ten, and ultimately one-hundred-year storms. I had some trouble finding some of the pipe sizes, they weren't labeled, um, on here, and the inverts were a little bit confusing on some of them, because if you look at the basin that's not labeled, there's four ninety-four, looks like the outfall from the, um, chambers. But I believe that there's a lot of water that's going to back up in those, and was that your intention?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And ultimately, um, as, as the design of those walls, especially the, the upper wall is finalized, um, you know, providing drainage for the wall itself, underdraining, you know, incorporating the underdrains of the walls in sort of this system, maybe there's some times I hear that, yeah, it's at the bottom, it's sort of the equalized system, that's, that's filling up.
We see that, yeah, it's, it's a portion of that.
Because that makes me a little bit concerned about the stability of that slope.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we're doing the retaining walls, and so that we take the, it's really steep in that area.
Yep.
So the idea is to step those walls, and to provide a gradual exposed face of foundation wall, and then bring in reasonable grades for maintenance, landscaping.
Sure, no, I'm talking about what's going on underground, like if you've got, what kind of walls are these going to be?
That, we don't have detailed, yeah, segmented walls or, or poured.
So, or poured?
Or poured.
Oh, because if they were poured, you could tie to the rock, but if, I mean.
We could do the same.
You're basically proposing two walls with a basin between them. And with everything draining down, you know, I, I do, I don't know, Doug, can you, do you have, share that?
No, I don't think there's enough detail right now.
Okay.
You know, I.
Yeah.
We'll provide that detail for you.
Okay.
It's kind of a concept thing, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, to Karen's point, it was difficult to, to see some of this, and without the survey.
Cut sections through there for you, so we'll lay that right out, we'll get it right detailed.
The other thing, Joe, is, I mean, two things, one is, it's, it's very commonly managed to blast on these projects. So it could be the blast, I think they just didn't tell us if there's a blast.
Yeah.
You know, we've gone through that before on, on these projects. The other thing is, along Medical Center Drive, I don't know what the status of it is, but during the first phase of this side of, uh, the project, when they did Resort Lifestyles, there was a major gas line that came up, um, and it's not very deep. So everything that you're showing there, um, I don't know if that gas line was totally, uh.
Abandoned or relocated?
Yeah, so in the back, on, on that, on that north end, down here.
No, it's along the top of the property line, right?
I don't know, I don't know if it was totally abandoned.
Okay.
Or they have two gas lines, um, but it was a large issue, because it's, it's, about the last floor around, it was, it was the main feed going into the house.
Okay.
My sense is that it's still active, that they just put a backup in, but I'm not sure, but you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on that.
If it's abandoned, it's not a problem.
Are you saying like towards the top of the bank?
No, down here, where you show all the underground storage units, coming right up the side of the road.
Yeah, the, the, the survey that we have, it shows the, the gas, the gas line, uh, just sort of ending here, but there is, there is a gas marker right here, so we're just assuming that it's following, at this point, obviously be verified, that it just following a uniform offset of the road.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really, I, I, I seem to think that they, they kept it in.
Okay.
So that they had multiple backups in case something happened.
Another, another, uh, option, okay.
Now, the other thing I noticed.
So you just double-checked the grid?
Yeah.
Before you get into it and find out? Those utilities are all marked out, heavy duty out there, for the, right around the sidewalk limits. It is something you're going in that we need to know about right now, I mean, everything is flagged, look like fresh flags.
At the intersection?
With, with big, yeah, all the way around the corner, all along here, heavily flagged and, and all along here. And it's, it's kind of following, you know, the sidewalk limits, so all the utilities are in here, and coming out here, it's all flagged. I didn't know if anybody knew what was going on, or jumping on the downside, Joe. Because it's, because it's, it's, it's fresh. Okay.
Fresh.
It's like Randy knew. All flags.
Definitely six or seven weeks, I agree, I just know so far as well.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Yeah, all right, well, if it's just something that's going, going under construction, um, we'll, we'll, we'll find out. We'll find out so that we've got to do some coordination with them or something.
So that's really all I had, I think you can kind of get the feeling of it, a lot of detail, and, you know, the, the sections and the elevations make it really helpful, the, um, you know, how the stormwater's going to work.
Okay.
I know there's a lot of rock out there, um, you know, we would encourage you to be creative, um, when it comes to the stormwater sign, so.
Okay.
Between the entrance drive and the parking lot, there is a gray, is that another retaining wall, the J-shaped thing that's in gray? Between the parking lot and the entrance drive, and it runs sort of to the southwest, and curves around Stormwater Management.
Right there.
Number two.
Yes, that, that's just a curve return on that retaining wall.
But that is, it's very hard to, for me to understand how the topography is with the green lines, and if you'd be able to do, maybe it's been mentioned, cross-sections there, in at least two places where the stormcast system is, so you can sort of see.
Absolutely, yeah.
Relate to the topography that will be done when your work is completed.
Yes, sir.
And this is really minor, just to the left of Stormwater Management Number Two, there's a rectangular little outline box, but it's not labeled anywhere, is that a relic of something else, or? It, it runs underneath the spillway, no, to the left of Stormwater Management Area Two.
I'm sorry, can't, is that?
Stormwater Management, that's Area Two, and just to the left, um.
It's the spillway.
Yeah, there's a spillway, across the spillway, there's a little outline or tank of a box on our drawings.
It's the spillway box.
It's no, spillway's in green.
No, the, if you look at the grades, that box represents the spillway.
Yes, um, I think that, it's line work corresponds where there are spot grades of, um, you know, the top of bank as a slope down to lower elevation that would, which.
We'll, we'll clean that up. Well, it's not a big issue, I'm just puzzled when I see something that is not flowing the land, but is not labeled.
We'll clean it up.
Okay.
Mr. Duran, I think we've made our case about.
Good.
Are you, you're all set? I got, that's more, Dave?
Yeah, that's probably smaller. Uh, you just told us how many parking lots we have, and then you mentioned that, uh, for the snow removal, you're going to put it on the parking lot, is that big? Because you're so close to the amount of spaces that you need, um, is that going to interfere?
No, I, you know, without having gone through a detailed discussion with, with these folks, you definitely want that to be verified, so we're going to, we're going to have to work off the edge of the pavement and the drainage swales, make sure that they aren't blocked, and we normally have a designated area called out. Now, again, you don't move everything to one spot, so we'll have a couple of areas in there, and, you know, you want to come up with a logical snow storage area, so we'll have something called out for you that.
Yeah, just be careful, because you're so close on the number of parking spots.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The other question, thing that I have, just an observation, when I was looking at it, and passing by, right off of there, you've got now a huge retaining wall that was done for the, uh, the townhouses up on top, like. And so you can see the visuality, but this is one-site kind of looking stuff. Just take into consideration how we're going to make it all mesh in together when you're doing your own retaining blocks.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I'm done.
Thanks, Dave. Erin, thank you too, Doug. I think you got your work cut out for you, let us know when you're ready, and we'll put you back on the agenda. Thank you for your time, and thanks for the comment.
Thank you so much.
See you.
Good folks, you're my aunt, Robert's Karen Holmes. So we've got two Karens tonight, and you're both going to speak?
Yeah.
Sharon, your turn.
I'll, 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 I'll leave your napkin.
Oh, my God.
Just you, Sharon.
This is hot, we'll be here all night.
Bob can speak when you can't, just try.
Please sit down, take the lead on this. So, you may remember that, um, that this project was before the, the board, uh, eighteen months ago. Years, a while ago, right, so it had been hanging around Austin Meadows, and then, um, we looked at the final plan, and said that it was in substantial conformity with the preliminary, and that's all that has to happen at Subdivision. So, um, then the plan was brought in for signature, and Valerie did sign it, um, last week. It was in substantial conformity, and then it was filed. What I wanted to make sure of tonight is that, um, we just, we ratified that, because there's some, um, there's some provisions in the town law about timeframes, and should they, if there had been an extension of time by the planning board to, um, to continue the plan on. So I just wanted to have, um, this board ratify that the final plan was in substantial conformance with the preliminary, and that, um, that Valerie was correcting signing the map, does that make sense?
Yeah. Rich, you were the author, if you recall, of the, you've got six months of the time, give you a start.
Right.
Until you're in the round.
Right.
So that we don't have people just hanging out for years, which we've had. We're supposed to notify the folks that your time is up, you either come back for an extension, or you're going to start from, from, from scratch.
Oh, sir.
Yeah, that was your idea.
Yeah.
But actually, with subdivision, the town law sets forth timeframes, the town law of the state of New York, not the manliness law. So that's where I wanted to just, um, make sure that everything is good for this applicant, and that we, we ratified that.
And we never notified that they won't be on the timeframe.
That's correct.
Which is our fault.
Our responsibility.
Right, right, yeah.
So I know what it is I'm going to vote on, on this map, could you tell me what these five A is?
So, I can't, I can't see this.
Well, every, this is consuming, you know, your phase, is this all funded?
It's all figured out.
This is, so that's what we're, I'm sorry, I just wanted to know.
Yes, this whole thing is Phase Five, and then we separated it into five, Phase A and B.
Okay.
Five A, five B.
Got it.
So, so the, what was filed was five A.
A, yeah, there's still five.
It's still evident.
No, it's kind of confusing, the little marks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, so, um, this plan that got filed of this five A, that's what you brought in the last time? You brought that in two years ago?
No, five.
We brought the entire thing, all of five.
So then Sharon wants to just do two phases, A and B.
Okay.
So she's had discussions with, the planning is.
Department of Medical five initiated with the county clerk's office to do five A.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we've already turned everything into the town last week, so two weeks.
We have three lots that are in the old section, that were, that we have to finish up, and then that's why.
Which were in three and four, Phase three and four.
Three, three developed lots in the old section, and now we have the new section, and we're going to have, what is it, nine or eight?
And the old section is, is absent of what we're talking about.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, never mind, just be quiet and.
You know, I know this stuff.
We'll be a bit, because now I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what we, what was approved. But I, I've got the, the map, I just, if I can open it.
So what, so what Bob's saying is, is starting to run out of lots, and what we know is Austin Meadows, and so it's time to start to get ready to do the next phase in, in Phase Five, so they want to do two parts, an A and a B.
And the lots had a change.
Correct.
No.
They have that change.
No, okay, they're not, they're actually not lots for building sites.
Because this is the H O A where there are no actual lots, very confusing.
You only own a foot part of your house, so.
Okay. Correct.
It's building parcels, yeah.
So, the, the ratification.
And that's what you showed on the drawing there.
Right, is that section, only section five A is being filed at the county clerk's.
Correct.
Office, and that what I see shaded is not.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that's what we assume, who knows what they do when, when they read it. But that's what we turned in, and in the note, there's a note down at the bottom right somewhere on there that says what you just said, that their Phase Five A consists of lots, blah, 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 blah. Building sites.
That's ours, sixteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight, five A.
Oh, there you go, you got it. So, so when we want to do the balance, you'll come back here, and we'll do the same thing. It's in substantial conformity unless it's not, right?
Oh, perfect.
I didn't know.
Well, that, well, that's what your understanding is, that's what mine is.
Yes, 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 of the understanding.
Okay, so this section, um, then, to reiterate, you know, I think the motion is, if I don't agree with this, um, that, that we're ratifying the action of the chair who has signed the map for Section Five A, uh, and it is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plan. And if we want to say in that motion, Section Five B is yet to be determined.
David, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I'll second it.
Second, very good. All in favor?
All right.
Any votes? Motion's carried.
So there's nothing you have to do.
Okay. You don't have to sign your hands, right?
Well, I do say that. No, but everything's signed, everything's done, it's fine, we just ratified the action, and then there's still one more section to do. We wanted to clarify that as well.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion? If, before we follow that up, again, for six months, then you should have a calendar, what you should be.
Yes, we definitely should.
To give us, uh, prompt, what.
Are you volunteering to keep that down there?
No, but we can do that.
I'm just kidding.
Well, I mean, but, but to also give it, uh, four weeks before the deadline, so that you have a meeting before then to perform.
Right, right, and then, and they can, actually, in the town law, in the subdivision, says, pretty much, come in, tell us you can do it, you get ninety days automatically, and I think you can do that successively for a number of, you know, for any number of reasons.
Come in and, come in and ask, or do they have to, like, go through that application process?
Oh, no, no, it's just an ask. It's just an ask, and then we, we have implemented that also on our segment approvals. Um, but that's, that's manliness law, what I'm talking about is town law in the state of New York.
Why can't we make it the applicant's responsibility to be on top of that, why are we responsible for aligning them? It sounds like one extra step that.
Yeah, I think it's just a, um, I don't know, courtesy of some. I don't know, courtesy, and some, and sometimes it is very.
We're trying to facilitate development that's done properly along with the code. And not to be obstructive, I mean, I've done this with the Board of Assessment Review, trying to get the assessment office to be more helpful. For instance, when somebody comes in and says, I wanna file my assessment request, you're supposed to file it with the clerk. Well, it's not the clerk at the assessment office, it's Alice, the clerk of the town. And if you don't file that, you're automatically disqualified from your exemption.
Right.
Now, that strikes me as legalistic.
To hinder.
Yeah, it's, it's an obstacle that serves no purpose whatsoever other than to enrage the town resident who thought he was following the rule, because it's like, this is the assessment clerk, I gave it to the assessment clerk.
Oh, I see.
Right, so my instructions was that you tell the clerk, if someone comes up to the window to file something. We send them over there to write one, so that they get proof.
That would be helpful. So is this just for subdivision renewals that this is versus?
Well, this is the, the, the town law of the state of New York has the rules, and it's similar to what we've adapted outside of the, you know, town manliness. Um, but I think, listen, if it were, we don't have to do, we don't have to keep track of it. I mean, the town law, but I think it's a good idea.
Sure.
How is it done now? Is it just another thing we sit across to do?
It's stunning.
It is now. But it, I mean, technically, it is their responsibility to keep track of the date.
But I see what I'm saying. That's a gesture.
All right.
I'm wrong. We're not here to fight with the developers. We're here to facilitate development.
In a reasonable.
In a reasonable way, respecting the needs and the, I don't know, responsibilities that go to residents who are already here. Ours is a giant balancing act. We're not for or against anything. We're here as neutral facilitators. Proving better good for the greatest number of people possible. I just made that up.
That sounds really good. That was inspiring.
By the way, something came up as we were talking about this that I think is important for all of us to know. There is such a thing as New York State town law.
Yeah.
And if you haven't seen it or read it.
Yeah.
You should.
Have at it.
Yeah.
Well, you should because there's.
I mean, I have to look at it myself. I've only looked at it when I've asked specific questions, not just for Bob.
There is a book, uh, is it the Association for Towns, I think, that has put out a book that has all, I mean.
Aaron, sometime you're suffering from the acute case of I don't want to do it myself. This would be a wonderful way to suck up a enormous amount of time. It's not a page drop, but it's very, but most of what we do, it's already prescribed. We're just following the rules.
Right.
Right.
Do a little bit of.
I had to think about it. Is it sixty days, is it ninety, it's a hundred, like, there's so many days, and, and where does it end?
Sorry, it's a clock, how long does it run?
So just wanted to try to make sure of that.
Now, Ramos?
Thanks. I have a business, folks. It's the general code review. I know you've all been waiting for this. They did, uh, yeah, they had the pleasure of reading every page of it. I can tell you, you're in for another treat. But basically, uh, these are, the town board is asking the planning board for our suggestions. Do you agree with this? Do you disagree with this? Are we gonna miss something? Is there something we should do differently? It'll take you ten or fifteen minutes to go through the low impact decisions. And then the major decision, which required a board review, uh, we have two things for you to look at. One is a separate bunch of stuff, and if you really get interested, they have paid these folks in Rochester.
Legal.
Uh, to do this for you, and they make their recommendations. So it'll flow from here to here to here, and eventually into the town code. Most of it is boilerplate. Uh, some of it is. Some of it is to recognize the fact that people do not speak the English language as well as they used to, and they certainly don't write it. And as someone who's spent most of his adult life correcting proofs, uh, I have to say that we're going downhill. But uh, do read it, and here's the good part. Everything has to be to Beverly. Excuse me. Valerie. Valerie and Jamie, either one of them. They will put it together and give it to the town. The town will decide what to do with it. But they're asking for our input, and I always cherish the opportunity to tell the town what to do.
Do we, what's our, do you know what the timelines are on this? Does it need, they want everything back on the twenty-five? So I went to a work session, yes, I went to the meeting that the town board had on this. And you can go back and watch the um video of it, and that explains it pretty well. Um, everybody got up and said their piece and explained where all the materials are, and I think it's like the inside left page of like the, the thinnest one has a schedule.
Yeah.
And so we need to have our stuff in by, what was it, Lisa?
I believe it's the twenty-third, but I think Valerie wants to talk about it again on the thirteenth, just to get everybody's.
Right, so.
Things back to the right.
Right, so if we can have everything in, and I don't know what everything's gonna be like.
Right.
You know.
I don't know yet either.
Well, we can, we're not at that deadline, but.
Right.
Um, if we can have a discussion, that would be great. I know at the zoning board, we're having a special meeting on May second. Just because of the way the meetings run, so um, there's gonna be a special morning meeting where any ZDA, they're gonna put in whatever their comment, so.
Should we send all our notes to Lisa?
Uh, no, send them to Valerie or me.
Okay.
Or Valerie and me, how's that?
That sounds even better.
It seems even better. And then we'll, we'll put them together, um, that's just to, to avoid too much chatter in the, in the group, which isn't good. Because then it's all, you know.
It'll be gone.
It could be, it could be. There's some, there's attorney-client stuff, you know, that's involved in that, but we just think for this, let's keep it that way, and then, and then we should have the open discussion saying, do you agree with this, this, and this? And we've done that many times on other recommendations that we've made to the town board, so.
So we should submit to you or Valerie, whatever our files are.
Yes.
And not collate them into our planning board recommendations.
Okay, we'll probably discuss it after next meeting. Probably on the meeting, but it's daylight much longer now, so we can stay long.
Now, in the spirit of, the spirit of democracy, uh, I was gonna ask uh, Dan Western if he'd like to make a motion to.
Sure. I'd be, I'd be happy to. I'd make a motion, okay.